Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, September 21st, 2015 at 7:00 in the evening. This is one of our, what we call a regular meeting night, and it's a meeting time on which we read ordinances. So you will see us working through a sequence of ordinances for third reading, which is the final reading, sometimes with some comments made by council members. We'll have ordinances for second reading, a few of which we will need to suspend because of shortness of time between now and basically some of the Halloween proceedings. And then we'll have ordinances for first reading. At the end of our council meeting, we always do have an opportunity for citizens to speak on agenda items that are not covered on the agenda. So something different that they might want to speak to council about with a three-minute time limit on that. And after that, we'll break for a few minutes. I know we have some students here from Dr. Sutis's class who sometimes like to, as part of their class requirements, ask city council members questions. We'll have a few minutes for that. And then after that, we will be moving into what's called executive session. So that will be a closed session, at which point the doors will be literally closed. Our first agenda item is establishing a quorum, and we do have all city council members present tonight. Next, we'll move on to communications from elected officials. We'll start first with our city council members, and I believe Councilmember Pappy has a communication.
Thank you. Need to discuss an issue that's currently happening in the city at the moment. We have a very large sewer break, and I've been back and forth talking with administration, and the mayor's going to update us as to what is currently going on.
Do you want to cover that now?
Yes.
Actually, there's a slip between Northwood and Madison, Briarwood and Madison, sorry. It's in the ravine there. It is actually sewage flowing. Because this has to do with a slip, as well as some trees moving and broken pipes, it's a little beyond our abilities right now, so we're looking at trying to bring a contractor in. I know, I discussed that staff this morning. We're evaluating as fast as we can, and the only reason why I mention it and its port because it is sewage, it is a problem. But the fact is, it may cost more than we anticipate, so just be aware of that. I don't think it's an emergency yet, but I'm sure if somebody who's living downstream from it, it is. So we're trying to get a handle on it as fast as possible.
Is there anything specific that the neighbors in that area should be doing in terms of raw sewage?
I wouldn't know offhand. Obviously, it's different than a water line break entirely, but I couldn't tell you any, just don't go swimming in it or walking in it, that's about it. Be considerate of your neighbors downstream.
Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, this is, this is in an area that's really a difficult area to access as well. It is in a ravine down between Briarwood and Madison, some of you may have seen as you're cruising around, which is one of the reasons why our city engineer is thinking contracting, because it's gonna, the scope of work is difficult, to say the least, with, you know, potential falling, slipping trees while they're working down there is what we're trying to fight.
Yeah, if it was a simple water line, or rather sewer line fix, it'd be easy. But the fact that if there's something in motion in terms of a hillside, we need to look at that. Most of it costs, it could actually get worse and start taking out houses, too. I don't know, I haven't been down there, I don't know the extent of it, but the idea is you have to treat it seriously.
And I know some of the constituents were wondering if the EPA is notified, and I believe they are in a situation like this.
Yeah.
And when all the information is pulled together, that is something that does occur.
I'll probably find out more in the morning at this rate, unfortunately, but again, we're working on it best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other council members with communications that they might have? Councilmember Patterson.
I have one, I do, just as a reminder, that the Joint Police Advisory Council's barbecue, so there will be a street closing on Park Place and the south end of Court Street for that pretty good barbecue, which is gonna be September 30th. Between the street closing, I believe, is from 5:00 to probably 9:00. The event is from 6:00 to 8:00. It's open to the public as well, but again, just one reminder that that street will be closed along that stretch.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile.
Just to add to that, the J-Pac barbecue, again, 30th, 6:00 to 8:00. Rain date, I think, is the next day, October 1st. And again, this will be, it's basically for police community, both students, both longtime residents, police, I think, will have, also force here, APD, OUPD. Concept, it worked out so well last year, we thought it was a good thing to repeat. Other things, the 23rd, which of course will be Wednesday, Union Street, West Union Street will be closed between Congress and Court Street. They're putting a crane in there to start working on some of the buildings that were damaged by the fire. If you have any questions, you can always call our Deputy Service Safety Director, but the street will be closed, just be aware of that. Other things, of course, let's see. The parking garage that we're still working on, we are going, construction works right now on upper and lower fourth floors, that will be going this week. We'll try keeping some of the upper ones available, just because the fifth is getting done and everything, but please be aware that it's a construction zone, so you want to be careful when you drive through there. Another thing we're having is, we're going to have a shred day, a community shred, your, what is it, sensitive documents, that'll be this Saturday, 26th, at the community center by the pool parking lot, city pool parking lot, between 9:00 and noon. So if you have some materials you want shredded, this is for residential, I believe, now you know where to go. Also, let's see, you'll hear a little bit more about a power outage that they expect to occur Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the Uptown area. I think it's gonna be mostly College Street, College Union to Court and Washington, somewhere in that area. I believe that has something to do with outparking garages construction. And last thing, of course, is that we're working on our fall lease schedule, that should be coming out soon. I think that covers everything.
Okay, thank you very much. Law Director Eliason, anything to report? Okay. We'll move on with our ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 7515, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 31st and November 1st, 2015, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens for Halloween weekend, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, I move to adopt 07515.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of this ordinance. It's been discussed in committee as well as read several times now. All those in favor of approving ordinance 7515 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 7615 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise for scheduled bandstand performances hosted by the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee on October 31st and November 1st, 2015, Halloween weekend, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, I move to adopt 07615.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of 7615. And once again, we've discussed this as well. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion is carried, the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 7715 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 31st and November 1st, 2015, Halloween weekend, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
I move to adopt 07715.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second for this last of the portion of Halloween approvals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries, ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 8415 is an ordinance authorizing water stabilization repairs to the armory and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 84 dash 15.
Second.
Thank you. Again, this is an ordinance to stabilize the building, but more importantly, it's authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids and to expend up to $82,500, which would come out of the capital improvements, land and buildings, which is 580, and it would come out of TC 500.
Okay, and I think we had an additional comment from Councilmember, yes, Canterbury.
Just a question, the 82,000, where did that number come from? Did that number come from an engineer's estimate, or was that a proposal that was submitted to RVC?
That was one of the bids submitted to RVC, and actually, that's about all the money we have in our TC, 580, 112, TC 500s. I think we have about 85,000 total. If it comes in overbid at that point, then we'll pretty much be stuck, okay? It's mostly for repointing, this was a recommendation that was done in, I believe, March, RVC looked at several, got some bids along the way in their analysis of it. They have, they have a whole series of recommendations that could run a lot more, but really, the pointing is one of the things they thought was most critical. Windows would be next, I think, that they'd like to see. But again, it comes down to, we're having discussions about historic preservation and what it looks like, because we also have other grants in train, we have grants in train, but not, this is gonna be straight out money. Does that answer your question?
Well, I guess I gotta caution that, that's already been bid through, or a proposal was submitted, and now we're bidding using theirs without an engineer's estimate. And I've just got a concern of the perception of what it looks like, as it could be rigged. And I don't, I just, I hate it when I will use those kind of numbers like that, so I, just my concerns.
Yeah, there was some discussion about that, and there was discussion, actually, some people were talking about they might come in lower if we put out, cast a wider net. Again, it depends on how much homework they've done in terms of their contracting. I mean, you know as well as I, when somebody puts out a bid, if they haven't done their homework, they eat the cost at that point. They can always ask for change orders, but we've only appropriated so much money. We thought that bid was a good mid-range, I think the other one was almost twice, not twice as much, but quite a bit higher. So it's interesting to see what they saw. There was some, and as I say, in the discussion, there was actually people, there was actually a discussion that they thought other people would come in lower, depending on how much repointing they thought was needed. The roof was done, what, three or four years ago? The flat portion was done about 10 years ago, and the, what is it, the little things that stick up that make it look like a fort were done about the same time, about 10 years ago, to stabilize those. So there are, but if you look, you can see where the mortar is leaching out right now, and that's really what we're trying to concentrate on, is preserving it, so we have a building at the end of the day. So again, casting wide a net, we might actually get more bids and cheaper bids. But again, we don't have much more money than what's, what we're putting out there right now. And we have had times where the bid goes over, nobody comes in that low, and we're stuck, and we'll reboot for next year, or find the money. But I suspect that this late date, we probably reboot for next year. That answer your question?
Somewhat, yeah. I mean, I understand the process of why we're needing to do it.
Yeah.
Just question the methodology of it.
Well, you know, we've done repointing on this building quite regularly, and usually you have somebody who comes along and says, "I do it," and they take a fast look at it. It's not really an engineer analysis most of the time, it's somebody who's, you know, a bricklayer, you know, it's not, you know, it's not somebody with a slide ruler, or I shouldn't say slide ruler, that dates me, for some kind of massive calculation on the thing. It's more like somebody looks at it and says, "Yeah, I think I can do this," looks that, 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 that. Of course, we've had the same thing here. And again, the cheaper ones don't require bids many times, but the fact is, because it's over 50,000, it has to go out.
Okay. Well, thank you for the additional information and for the question, Councilmember Canterbury. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of this for the stabilization repairs for the armory with winter weather approaching, so all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. The motion carries, six to one, yeah. All right, we have ordinances now for second reading. 8215 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Monday, October 26th, 2015, from 5:00 to 7:30, for trick or treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, I move to suspend 08215 due to the 30-day emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to consider ordinance 8215 under suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
I do need to discuss this for a moment and bring council up to date, so since we met two weeks ago...
Yeah, why don't you do the motion first, with motion and second, and then we'll have a discussion.
Okay, I move to adopt 8215.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and additional comments now.
And we had a citizen who is a store owner, business owner, on Court Street come and speak with us, and since that time, there has been a meeting of the Uptown Business Association, and I have spoke with administration, and also the chamber has issued a letter stating their comments related to the fact that they would like to see it maintained on the 26th. I know that several business owners have asked that it be moved to the next Monday, so that would be the Monday after the Halloween, which I believe is the second. In digging down into this issue a little bit more, there are several issues of concern. One is when the meters are blocked off, which city staff tends to do around noon or 1:00, which then impedes business for many businesses on Court Street, since it is the entire street that is closed for parking. And there are some broader concerns about the closure of the street and what it does for business on Court Street, or lack thereof, business on Court Street. Administration has said either day works for us in terms of the work that needs to be done. Of course, some of the businesses that are most concerned are somewhat Halloween-dependent in terms of, it's a large portion of their, of the business. I just wanted to get that information out to everybody before we make a vote. I don't know if you would like to speak, would you like to speak? Okay, we are going to allow Barb to speak one more time.
Sure. And Barbara, if you just want to come up and print your name, so we have it for the register, and then announce it for the camera, too. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Stout, and I live in 954 East State Street in Athens, and I own Athens Underground. And I realize that I'm tilting at windmills here, and this is probably the ultimate exercise in futility. But I will repeat again that the last six days before the Black Party accounts for more revenue than the entire summer to, and I have to close, I cannot conduct business during this trick or treat. It is an impossibility, the streets are too crowded, there's no parking, there's no parking anywhere in the vicinity. I mean, everything in any surrounding side street, everything's parked up because people are coming in from all over the county for this, and it is an absolute zoo. And this is the equivalent of, imagine you had a business on the internet, and somebody said, "Oh, well, we'll just close down the internet for about three hours on Black Friday, won't hurt you very much." This is my Black Friday. It's really, it's really critical to me. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, I do very much appreciate being listened to, I feel like I have been listened to with respect, and that my concerns have been taken seriously, and I appreciate that. But it's difficult to have a business on Court Street, and it's getting more and more and more difficult to maintain and make a living, and this is really critical to me. And so, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Barb. The one other thing that I wanted to throw out to council and to our administration is that it seems, after kind of delving into this, and other council members and myself have been doing other research on Court Street businesses, and the impacts of certain businesses on other businesses, as well as street closures and those kinds of things, you know, we have a variety of businesses on Court Street, and they all don't benefit from a lot of the things that, that get done, whether it's a, you know, a car show, or a band concert, or whatever's happening. And I'm just suggesting that we may want to put some kind of think tank group, brainstorming group together, and talk about, you know, we've got two projects on the books, and another project increasing the density downtown with projects that are going on, and I think this is something that we may want to sit down as, with our planner and Ohio University and other business owners, to really discuss what the shift has been and what is occurring on our downtown street, our main street, Court Street.
Yes, Mayor.
I would point out, if I backtrack on this, the first time we closed the street for AUB Halloween was 2008. In other words, I instituted and started it, mostly because there were too many kids on the sidewalk. You could always keep the street open. After all, that puts some kind of pressure on the kids to watch where they're going. That would also limit it. And realize also, the dialogue regularly occurs up of closing the entire Court Street for pedestrian mall, okay? Which I think most of the Uptown Business Association members are not, would not be pleased with.
No.
We do close the street regularly during the summer, mostly because it's an off-season when the students aren't here, and we want to keep the vitality of the city up and running. We could actually eliminate any of these closures during school year, but it would make it difficult. Halloween, of course, we've decided to embrace it rather than try shutting it down. You can always, as the next mayor, can always figure out how to do that. Or, and again, you have that whole extreme, saying, "We want it closed all the time, we don't want it closed at all." So you've got, you've got parameters to play with here.
Right.
Actually, this is your vote, you could always say no. Right now, you could have four of you go say nay, and then, then we have a different dynamic. This is your authority.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, do you have an additional comment? And let's restrict it, at this point, to conversation about Halloween, closing for that, and I hear that we'll have future discussion on that, but right now, we're voting on this ordinance.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that I heard Councilmember Pappy correctly that the city administration is open to either week, am I correct? So either the 26th or the, what was the other date?
Second.
The 2nd, November 2nd. And am I correct that I understood AUB did make a vote, and they were leaning towards the 26th with their last vote?
Well, I think that's a good question. No, I've not seen the vote, that's what was told to us, and then the chamber as well signed on and said...
Chamber of Commerce.
The chamber, yes.
But then, and correct me if I'm wrong, but some businesses were also completely fine with it being...
Moved.
Moved to the November 2nd.
I'm understanding at the AUB meeting, that was discussed.
So what you're voting on at this point is, we're voting on whether to close the street on that date.
Could we propose to amend it?
To change the date.
To change the date.
You could, yes.
We're in the midst of doing all our planning for both Halloweens at this point. To move the date over might make it more difficult for us to actually get the police and get the, all the, you know, service people to close the street at the proper time. So it could, it could impede either, either Halloween by moving the date.
It could impede, excuse me, either Halloween, either the AUB one or the big Halloween.
The big Halloween, kids' Halloween.
I'd like to ask for clarification on why this has not been an issue in the past several years. If, if our first street closure was in 2008, I'm not sure when the AUB trick or treating began in the first place, but this typically takes place on the Monday preceding Halloween, correct? What...
The last two years, it hasn't.
No. It shifts all the time over. We actually jumped, last year's Halloween ahead, rather than have it on the 30th, I believe. We've always, usually been trying to avoid having Halloween, uptown Halloween on Halloween, because it just adds more, I don't know.
Right, I understand that the, the main celebration on the streets on a Saturday is not always the 31st, because the 31st doesn't always follow on a, fall on a Saturday, but my understanding of the AUB trick or treating is that it's typically in the week leading up to that celebration. So I'm not sure why this hasn't been an issue in the past several years.
It hasn't been an issue with us. I mean, basically, we're doing it as courtesy for the chamber and Uptown Business Association.
And I think that it maybe has been an issue for Ms. Stout, but...
I've raised it.
And she's raised it, and so this is the second year in which it's occurring, which it makes it difficult for her to conduct business.
Last year, it was after Black Party.
Oh, was it?
The last two years, it's been after Black Party, and it's because I went in and I've raised the issue. I've raised the issue for years, since the first year. I haven't come to council, but I have raised it with the chamber.
Okay. Okay.
How do you want to proceed?
We do have a motion and a second at this point, is there interest in somebody amending the ordinance?
My concern is amending it, I think it's almost too late at this point.
Why is that?
If, well, if that's, if you're trying to get your police and everybody on board with all their days in order to do the Halloween and this Halloween, is it just, can it be cajumbled?
Actually, I'm not involved in this conversation, I do know that they had a Halloween meeting today, they'll have one Wednesday, they'll cover mostly the big Halloween, but it'll cover all the street closings and all the problems between here and there.
So it's, so it's possible that nothing's been set in stone at this point? It is possible.
Except with the chamber, I imagine.
The chamber and AUB, they have voted. Council, we have Councilmember Canterbury first, and Councilmember Patterson.
Just one question for clarification, the dates, since this is the second reading of these dates, was these dates not submitted during the Halloween meetings with your administration? So they've had this for several weeks now, and this is what they was planning, so they've now jiggled their calendars to meet these dates.
Yeah.
Somewhat.
Well, well, I would only say that it was read for the first time, we didn't vote on it two weeks ago, and that concern was brought to us at that time.
Councilmember Patterson.
The one concern that I have is kind of echoing, I think, what Member Butler was asking, and that is, is there documentation, is there anything in writing or otherwise from AUB or from the chamber in terms of what their desires are? It is an AUB event sponsored.
It was forwarded to me later, after about four or five days. I did not get the document myself, but there was a letter from the chamber that said, "Since the city had come and asked for it to be moved to the 26th, they would stay with that." But at the AUB meeting, which occurred the Wednesday after the Monday of our meeting two weeks ago, they were flexible. And then it was put out to a vote with the AUB members, and I'm not, I'm just taking the president's word for it, that, that it was the 26th. I don't know how many people voted.
Right now, we have a motion and a second, so any, any additional comments? All those in favor of the ordinance 8215 for closing the portion of Court Street on Monday, October 26th, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
So the motion is, the ordinance, or the motion is defeated.
What was the number, 1-4?
We want hand raises.
Wait, we, can we do it again? All those in favor of approving this ordinance, raise your hand. So we have two.
Two.
All those against it? Okay, five.
So we don't close the street? Okay.
We do not close the street.
Can I, point of clarification, a new ordinance could be brought forward, though it would have to be suspended.
Maybe have a committee meeting on it, too.
So I would say next week, we have a committee meeting on this.
We'll have a committee meeting next week for further discussion.
Because we're still going to have the trick-or-treat, close the street. I don't want to see children get hurt. My business is not so important that it's worth risking. If, if what's this, is about is just closing the street, you can't have the trick-or-treat and not close the street. I, I really, there's so many kids, I feel it's dangerous, and my business is not worth one kid being hurt.
So we'll continue with committee next week, and if you want to present any additional information, and I'm sure we'll have other information between now and then, but right now, we have the ordinance. The vote's been taken. We'll move on to the next one. The ordinance for first reading is 8715, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $523,411 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring a new pumper truck and related equipment and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. What you just read there pretty much sums up everything about this ordinance, even though it's one, two, three, four pages long. This is just part of the obligatory process when we have to acquire pieces of necessary public safety equipment that is extremely expensive, in this case, over $500,000. Does the administration need to speak about this?
Hold on a second.
Okay.
I lost my place on this. Okay, this has to do with the pumper truck, rolling over the notes for the pumper truck. The pumper truck arrived Wednesday. As the last discussion we had, we had a discussion about trying to pay off both the ladder truck, or the tower truck, as they call it, and the pumper truck at the same time, simultaneously. Conversation was originally, the idea of throwing about $75,000 at each one towards the principal. At that point, we looked at and said it would probably take out about half of our unappropriated balance in the general fund. So we whittled it down to $100,000 between the both entities. This in particular is the pumper truck. This price reflects $50,000 less than the cost of the truck. Say, I know the truck arrived Wednesday, they're still fitting it out. I am told they were trying to purchase some new hoses, but because the fires on the West Coast, nobody's selling hoses anymore. I guess that's a third world problem.
There's a hose shortage.
What?
There's a shortage of hoses?
Yes. I guess they've been told that they can't sell them on a state contract or something like that.
Wow.
This was, I found out this morning as staff, so I guess we'll be taking some of those old hoses from the old truck and move it in.
Oh, okay, so.
So that, really, this is to, to, to start the loan for the pumper truck.
Okay.
And it passed, it's through Hockey Valley Bank, as you know, and the rates are, it's a one-year loan. We'll roll it over, knock down the principal some more next year.
Right.
Again, we have, we received $50,000 from the university towards our fire protection. And again, we split it in half, 25 going to each, each vehicle right now. Does that answer your question?
Yes, very well.
Twenty-five thousand each from the city and the university towards the two trucks.
Plus, we added another 25 of our own, so we're, we're matching whatever the university put in to, to knock down the cost.
Okay.
So it's 50 towards each one.
Okay. And we're bringing all this up because we have a loan payment in December, so we're moving this forward now to remove, renew the note.
There's no need for suspension. I think we can get through this in three readings, so.
Okay.
Just normal first reading.
Thank you. Ordinance 8815 is an ordinance amending ordinance 8515, our 2015 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend 8815.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 8815. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
I move that to, for adoption of 8815.
Second.
As you've read here, this is an ordinance to amend an ordinance that was passed this year. The reason for the amendment is that there were some errors that crept into the original ordinance, and they're not clerical. We can't get by and say that it was just a typo. These were misinformation or miscommunication. And the big thing here is, I'm looking, it's, we're changing $47,979 to FEMA fund to $47,468.86. So that's the reason why we're doing this under suspension. It's already been passed, and we have to correct it now.
Okay. We have a motion and, we, we have suspended the rules. We have a motion and a second for approval of 8815. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 8915 is an ordinance amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend 8915.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules, and the suspension being...
Again, as we, this, we are amending an ordinance that has previously been passed for appropriations. We have to make a correction, so we have to suspend the rules and get this corrected.
Okay. So, let's be on that. Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
I move to adopt 8915.
Second.
Again, for the reasons I stated for the suspension, we have to make a change to the appropriation. In this case, it's $5,000 to the cemetery fund. That's 101115 TC 200, and increase in the appropriations by set amount. That's it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 8915. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 9015 is an ordinance granting the renewable, of a revocable license to Wilson Deaton owner, 108 Sunny Side Drive, to allow a fence on the city right-of-way. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
We discussed this last week. Revocable licenses are good for 10 years. This is a renewal. I think it's a change of ownership, house, the house, the fence.
Okay. We then have ordinance 9115, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Christine Hughes, owner 270 East State Street, to allow a deck that encroaches on the city right-of-way. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Pretty much same thing. It's good for 10 years. I think this is a, the deck that's at Dela, Delazona.
Okay. Thank you. Ordinance 9215 is an ordinance granting a revocable license to Erin Bickel, owner 91 and 91 and 1/2 Columbus Road, to allow a sign that encroaches on the city right-of-way. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
This is a, a new license for a new sign, from what I'm understanding. 10 years.
Just nicely, I do have a question about the Christine Hughes. You said this was the same thing as the previous, but it's a new...
It doesn't say a renewal.
No, it's a new one.
Okay, so it's a new...
But it's for 10 years.
New deck?
Uh-uh. I think that maybe they...
The existing deck?
Change, yeah. You have to, you get a new, it, it may have already had a revocable license associated with the piece property, but if you change ownership, then you have to get a new revocable license. It's not a renewal, because it's a new name, so. So there might have been a revocable license for that particular deck, but this will be a new one because it's under a different name.
So you're saying they own the building now?
Maybe. I don't know. I don't know the ins and outs.
All we know is that it's not a renewal, though. Good question.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. We now have a one-reading resolution. Our 1115 is a resolution affirming the authority of Athens City Council to set fringe benefits, including vacation, and this is introduced by all members of council. And I believe Councilmember Reisner, you have been...
I'll speak to it.
Involved with this, yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I will read the resolution. Resolution 1115, introduced by all members of council, a resolution affirming the authority of Athens City Council to set fringe benefits, including vacation. Whereas, city council plans to review deadlines for use of accrued vacation time greater than the lawful accrued and unused vacation credit at the time of separation, up to three years accrual. And, whereas, city council by ordinance will set a reasonable deadline when setting a time period for those employees currently carrying hours in excess of the three-year accrual. And, whereas, city council intends to establish consistent policies and procedures relating to accrued time for all employees, both non-union and those subject to collective bargaining at the time of contract negotiations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Athens of Ohio. Section 1 is hereby affirmed, and in accordance with ordinance 122-14, that Athens City Council has sole authority to set fringe benefits, including vacation accruals, for all employees of the city. Section 2, this resolution shall be ineffective, and full force appoint its passage and approval by the mayor. That's it. The idea, of course, is to reassure many of our non-union employees that their accrued time that they have accumulated for years of service to the city will not be removed or arbitrarily taken away, but shall go through a series of due processes that we will establish, and they need not worry that anything was going to happen to it anytime soon. We will take this matter up next month and resolve it.
For the, as...
So I ask for passage.
And we'll be considering that when we consider the non-union fringe benefit package?
Yes.
And anything relating to collective bargaining then will be, if it needs to be addressed, would be at another time.
What date are we discussing that? I believe it was put out there, October...
October 14th, though I have had communication from one of the legal representative of some of the employees, Mr. Shostak, who requested that we delay it by two weeks. I'm polling members of the Finance and Personnel Committee to see if they have any objections to that. I believe we can accommodate that. At the same time, I don't want anyone to think that we are purposely delaying it unnecessarily.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the comments. Yes, Mayor Wyer.
Is there a motion on this?
We do not have...
Okay, sorry.
We had a long explanation, and I should have had the motion first, the motion and second.
So I move to adopt 1115.
Second.
Okay, we now have a motion and a second. Thank you, Mayor Wyer.
I, I just thought I, I spaced out or something.
I'm going to fight it, okay.
Sorry.
Possible.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Nay? Okay. This is unanimously, and so we will give it all consideration. Thank you for the patience with us. All right. Next on the agenda, announcements and other business. We do have, we will need a motion to enter, to accept the auditor's August 2015 financial reports.
I so moved to accept the audit.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm sure we won't.
Um, President, I have a order of business.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Fall.
I would like to renominate for appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals Ed Baum, who's, he will come up in, in October. His appointment ends in October, so I would like to put him forward for another...
Three years?
Yeah. How many years is it?
Three.
Three years.
Okay, so a three-year appointment for Mr. Ed Baum, who's served formerly on city council and a variety of other roles, and been active with the City Comprehensive Plan, so.
Is that a nomination?
Yes, I nominate.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for nomination to accept Ed Baum for a reappointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider it unanimous. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not been covered on the agenda. So is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on another topic tonight? Just ask that you raise your hand and you come up to the podium and sign in. Okay. If not, we'll ask one more time. Anybody else? Okay. What I will ask now is that we have a motion to enter into executive session. Oops, I'm sorry.
Do you have any committees scheduled for next week?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
Transportation.
Finance, personnel.
Planning.
Planning.
Sure.
City and safety.
Which one is the poll under? City Services?
Or Planning.
Planning, okay. Just wondering.
Whatever.
Thanks for asking.
Of course.
All right. So we do have those. Are there any other announcements before we proceed into a motion for executive session?
I was just wondering if we should make the announcement again about the debate discussion is next week.
Yes, it will be. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you.
You've been spearheading this?
There will be discussion on the 28th about the pool.